Okay, good evening everyone. We are now in session for the Common Council, August 25th, 2015. If you do speak, please state your name for the record, and that way we have it for the minutes. We met at Common Council on July 28th, 2015, and we had a budget meeting. Does anybody have any corrections or additions to the amendments presented? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve as printed. All in favor? Okay. The Board of Public Works and Safety had met July 9th and July 23rd. Does anybody have any questions on the Board of Public Works and Safety? Okay. Communications, does anybody have any communications tonight?
There is gonna be a caller on. Should've brought the information, but the Rochester Downtown Partnerships put it on a caller on. It's gonna be in front of the moose like it was last year. September 12th, at 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock is registration. They're all $25, no matter what age.
Is it a 5K?
It is a 5K, yes.
Are you leading the pack?
Uh, no. I used to be able to do that.
9 o'clock registration and 10 o'clock start. Does anybody have anything else for communications? Okay, we have a public hearing tonight. We'll open our public hearing on our budget. Shot, do you have anything you wanna add to this?
I know, this is just the notice to taxpayers that's required to be filed, same one we review every year at the public hearing. All the numbers on here are the same that was, has been discussed in the last two council meetings, including all changes that were requested from parks in general. So these are the final numbers that were submitted to the DLGF, and we won't do our adoption until next month. We'll do natural adoption, and we'll just have to open this up for the public hearing to make any comments from the public.
Okay. Andy, do we need to go into detail on this, or since it's a public hearing?
On the public hearing?
Yes.
The public hearing is to give an opportunity to respond to the appeal of a teaching lesson on what's in it.
Okay. Does anybody in the public have anything they'd like to bring up for the council for the budget we're adopting?
Do you have any to look at?
Yeah, I got it on my... Our general budget's gonna be, without counting a lot of the other money that we have coming in from other councils and everything, $2,610,615. If there's no public comment, I'll put it back to the council. Does anybody have anything on the council that we wanna review on this or anything? Then I'll move to go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we need a motion for that, Andy? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
A second.
All in favor? Okay. Alright, we have a condemnation on 826 Main Street, the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing now for 826 Main Street. Is the owner here?
Yep. I got a certified letter in the mail.
Say your name, please.
My name's Robert Lawell. I've since sold the building on contract to Mr. McIntyre out of Bremen. He's a contractor that redid the building. But I guess since it's a contract, I'm still kinda responsible to see that it gets done. The letters we received, the certified letters, both of us were for tomorrow, the 26th. So he couldn't be here tonight because he made other plans. But I knew the council meeting was tonight, so I showed up. Anyhow, I got this letter that says you're gonna condemn this building, and I don't know how you can do that. The insurance company spent almost $300,000 redoing that building after the fire. And we haven't been able to put the south wall on because we haven't been able to grant access to the property to do it. And we have a court order out of Cass County granting us permission to go on the property. Property owner's been paid $50 a day for that privilege, for us to go on his property. He won't allow us on his property. I got, received another letter from him this spring, giving us another six-week period that we could come on the property at additional $50 a day. Or if we wanted to just replace the tarps, he wanted $500 to come on his property to replace the tarps. Mr. McIntyre now has hired an attorney out of Cleveland, Jerry Humphrey. And he's asking that the council give direction to the police department to enforce this court order we have. If that doesn't happen, we have to go back to court again and receive another court order, but then it still has to be enforced. So that's just delay the project probably another six, eight months, time to get a court date and go through all that mess again. Mister, we met two weeks ago with Casey, the state building inspector, the county building inspector. The main thing they have, they want those brick walls are exposed, covered up. Mr. McIntyre says he can do that from the sidewalk, where we don't have to get on anybody's property and from the back of our lot. So he's willing to come down and clear all that up. But we need to know from the city whether you're gonna enforce the court order we have to get on the property, to put our wall up, or whether we have to go back to court.
I'm going to turn it over to our attorney here, or Casey, where's Casey at? She was here. Who do I wanna go to first? Attorney?
In terms of court order, I don't see any situation where the city uses its police head powers to enforce a private court order. Okay? And if it's a matter of not having access to your property via the neighbor's property, I don't see a situation where the council can tell the police to enforce that. That's a, that's a private agreement. And even though at one point, the city was involved as a party with regard to concerns about your neighbor's property, as I understand it, the order, and I could be wrong, the order you're referring to is about you having access to that wall via your neighbor's property. That's the question. I don't, that's a, that's a private agreement signed off by the judge, but I don't know of any way the council can enforce that, to enforce that. Someone has to go back to that judge, and you have to convince the judge your neighbor's not living up to your order.
And then what happens if the judge says, "Yeah, that's true, you have to let him on just like he did the last time, and he still doesn't let us on, what is our recourse?"
The judge is the only one who can order the police to become involved in that. The council can't do that, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so this judge in Cass County has to order our police department to enforce his order.
At this point, you need to ask your attorney what you can do about it, but my understanding in that scenario is, for the police to enforce a private order, it requires the direction of the court that signed the order to say that. It's no different than a foreclosure proceeding, doesn't happen until the judge tells the sheriff, you know, "You're gonna sell that property." The bank can't simply walk to the sheriff and say, "I'm not paying."
I guess I got a question for Casey. Didn't you tell me that the local police enforced the order that you got to go on the property?
Her Judge Steele's order.
Her Judge Steele's?
Her Judge Steele's order, 'cause he was the judge for our case at that time. But Judge Steele had to make that an order. He made that call.
Can you tell me, can the judge in Cass County give an order to the local police in Fulton County to enforce his order?
Oh, yeah, he can. They certainly can. More likely that, yeah, he can. I don't have your order in front of me, but you should consult your attorney about what he thinks the judge would be willing to do on that. But certainly, law enforcement aren't gonna obey the court order of any court in the state.
Well, that's what I have to tell you now. I guess it's gotta go back to court, so it's gonna be a while. We will take care of the exposed brick. There is some question about that wall. Some people have said, "Well, it's a wonder it hasn't caved in." Well, that wall is all brand-new studs, insulation, it's got two layers of 5A drywall on the outside of it. It's got a layer of fire and ice membrane, and then a layer of tieback underneath the tarps. So the wall's not going anywhere as far as water damage or anything like it. So it's just a matter of getting it covered up eventually. And believe me, nobody would rather get it covered up than me. So that's what I have to tell you, so.
So do you have a, if you're speaking for your contract buyer, does he have a timeline you can tell the council?
He said he could probably be down here and do the brick cover. He's just gonna cover with metal right now until we get a brick mason in. But he said he could probably do it within the next month. Just a general timeline. He just has to get a man lift and get the metal bent and stuff, get it put up.
Casey, do you have anything to comment on that for the council?
I guess my only suggestion would be to put a definitive timeline on it between getting the metal on and actually make it definitive, and then also put a timeline on legal action. I mean, you can't put a timeline on when a judge will act, but you can put a timeline on when it's filed. I mean, if it takes six to eight months because the court is busy, that's understandable. If it takes six to eight months to file it in court, that's unexcusable.
Well, he's already contracted with the attorney to do it. It's just a matter, the attorney said, "Well, if you can get the city to enforce your order, then we won't have to go through all this." But I guess that's not a possibility, so we'll have to go back through the court system. And what do you think, for the attorney to file a motion, 30 days?
I'm a defer to the attorney here.
I don't, I don't know what your order says, okay? I wouldn't part with that.
Well, it was an order between the city, the property owner, and our insurance company. And part of it was reimbursing for, you know, they put up that walkway and that fence at one time. The city ordered that to be put up, I guess Casey ordered it to be put up. But it had several things in it, but one of the things was, we have permission to go on his property at $50 a day to repair that wall.
Anytime you have an order that, where someone else has been ordered to do something that benefits you, you can file a request with the court. It's called a motion for a rule to show cause, and basically asking the court to hold that person responsible for not obeying the order. I don't see any reason, given what you've told me, why you couldn't get a rule to show cause motion on file within 30 days.
Okay, that's fine. I'm sure that was no problem. So that's what I can tell the council at this point. We'll address the corners, the exposed brick, and get something filed in the Cass County Court within 30 days.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Does anybody have any comment on that? Is that satisfactory for the council?
Yes, for me, it seems fair enough. Thank you very much.
If you need any kind of a motion? I would say we need a motion to adopt his proposal since it's a public hearing.
I think what you'd be doing is, you'd be...
Continuing it?
A motion to continue it. Andy, you actually tabled the matter, if you want to table it for the next meeting, at that point, that's what I would suggest you do.
Okay. I'll move that we table the issue to our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Should our attorney then send this motion?
If I took a copy of the motion, that'd be helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Does anybody else from the public like to speak? Did we make a motion on this already?
A motion, a second.
Before we do the... Does anybody, let's wait a minute. Does anybody wanna say anything in the crowd, the public, on this before we make a motion? Speak now or forever, hold your peace. You heard me. Okay, now I'll entertain the motion.
I move that we table, I forget the address, 826 Main Street, to our, to our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
September 22nd. It's the next meeting.
That's the date, isn't it our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Any comment? All in favor? Okay. Now I will close the public hearing on the 826 Main Street project. Chief Schatz, do you have anything to report today?
I do. For the month of July, we had 22 total accidents, one of them being personal injury. 78 total warnings, 82 total offenses, 61 case reports, 729 calls for service, 36 lockouts, eight vehicles towed, and 15 people incarcerated. And we have the list of offenses the people are incarcerated for. You guys have any questions about those numbers?
I don't know that, but you wanna give the council update on, we have Operation Pull Over now, right?
Uh, yeah, Operation Pull Over is going on right now. It's Drive, Subway, Get Pulled Over, DUI enforcement. I'm not sure how one meant to open it, it was in the paper, Wes, do you remember?
No idea.
What's going on right now, so don't drink and drive, wear your seatbelt, and you won't have an issue, I promise you that. Monday, we had, during the Board of Works meeting, the Board of Works made a conditional offer to Tyler Danson for the, our new police officer. So we've got one in the process of being hired. Obviously, he asked you to just serve testing, and it's probably gonna take another four to five weeks before we actually get him approved to start his FDO process. But it's one down, two more to go. We're accepting applications until September 28th, until new, to be precise, September 28th. We're, hopefully, we'll be able to fill two more positions. Our Lady's Handgun class, it's gonna be September 27th, on a Sunday, I seen we worked out really well last time. So we're gonna have another one September 27th. We haven't started advertising yet, but we will this week, and I expect that to fill up within a couple of days. On September 1st, 2nd, 3rd, Sergeant Hipsher and I will be going to Camp Abner for the designated mark training. It's kind of an interim between patrol rifle and sniper. We both went through the basic and advanced sniper school last year, but this is just kind of the last thing that we haven't been to that we're gonna get done. So we thought we'd get that done this year, and then September 9th and 12th, we'll be participating in the Indiana SWAT Challenge. I'll also be at Camp Abner. No, last year we finished third, so we're hoping to improve on that. We'll see. We're getting older, and not many officers to choose from. So that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Chief Butler on a run?
He's sick.
Oh, he got sick? We don't wanna hear it.
Somebody has to go. It might be for... I don't wanna hear his response.
The Spottin' Ass Board.
Oh, yeah. Well, let's get that later part, come back to that, since we gotta make an agenda here. If you want, if you wanna go.
Okay, let's go to Area Plan Commission. Do you have anything?
Did not meet.
Brian, you have an update on Petco?
I do not have a report. I missed the last meeting, and I did not get a copy of the minutes.
Burns, do you have a report on the park board?
Yes. Uh, park board met. On the 10th, uh, Marvin Davis came in and wanted to get permission to start a pickleball, pickle? I said pick. Pickleball, I'll get that straight. Court, I'm Don Fandler, and it's the same as, you don't know what pickleball is. It's played with a paddle, and it's similar to tennis. And it originated, I guess, in Florida, and they brought it up. There's a couple have pickleball courts in their barns out here, and they've been playing out there. They would like to get it started, and people have asked, could they play on the Fandler? So the park board has granted that. Pool took in $10,923, which is pretty good for them. It'll be open 4 through 8, through Labor Day. Also, Lenny had some repairs on the cracked slide that was ordered, the fascia board at the shelter replacements also. There's a lot of, the fascia board has to be replaced. The golf report, uh, let's see. I gotta go through this real quick here. There was some equipment irrigation repairs, controls were damaged, destroyed by lightning, and this is going to be repaired very shortly. There's some water damage, has to be, part of it has to be received. Storm, recent storm knocked out, uprooted a lot of trees, were broken off, and somewhere top 30 to 50 trees at the course, and they've used a large number of hours to try to get this cleaned up so they could play. As a matter of fact, the course was, back nine was closed, trying to get some of that trees removed. It takes two to three, two to three months to close up the pool and get it cleaned. And they will be doing that here very shortly. Outside of that, I think that's about it. Any questions?
Thanks, Burns. Have questions?
We hardly had time to formulate our questions tonight. That was a brief report.
I'm sorry. I'll see if I can just string it out.
Okay, I'll see Terry, so we'll move on to Mark. That's one that you have to top now.
Okay.
Warzoning?
Yes, I'll do the BZA first. We meet tomorrow night. There are three items on their agenda tomorrow. The library is asking for a variance to, he wrote a couple of signs, that'll be a little bit closer to the right of way than is allowed, so they wanna vary on a setback there. Tracy Overmeyer is asking for a variance on her property at 1319 Main Street. She wants to turn that into two apartments. They'll be very small, and they are smaller than what the code is for that area, considerably smaller, so that'll probably be an interesting discussion. And the third item is the greenhouse, wants to turn the house that's always been connected to the greenhouse, but isn't now, it's on that corner, turn the bottom part into a gift shop with an apartment on top. So that's what the BZA will be discussing tomorrow night. Council on Aging met yesterday. I was unable to go, but a few things to report. The audit is completed, and the exit interview is on 8:31 at 10:30. I do plan on attending that. Lori reported that Steve, the landscaper, and Warren had gotten together and have agreed on the routine maintenance of the property and keeping the weeds down, and it looks really nice there, if you haven't been by. Obviously, a lot of work has been done, trimming the bushes, trimming the trees, getting it all cleaned up. They made, don't let me interrupt you guys, they made $185 fundraiser at Dairy Queen last, I think that was on the 18th, if I'm not mistaken, but a nice, nice little thing that Dairy Queen does, and Council on Aging got $185. There is a spaghetti dinner scheduled for Tuesday, October 6th, 4 to 7 o'clock. Certainly, everybody is invited to attend that. The, there still is a seat open on the board. Dave Toson's replacement has been made by the county, but they have not appointed that person to our board yet, so I don't know if they're thinking they're going to do something different, or whether Dave's replacement will be the person, but at any rate, that board member has not been chosen yet. Rights still continue to tick down just a little bit in 2015. 3,187 rights were provided in July. They are ticking up again with the start of school, so. Any questions, BZA or Council on Aging?
Thanks, Mark. Okay. Chase, do you have anything to bring to the table on solid waste, animal adoption, or...
I don't have anything on solid waste, and Animal Adoption Center will meet Thursday. Normally, I would've been last Thursday, but we changed it. No, I don't.
Okay. Do you want to give...
Let's take a stab at it.
On the...
EMS.
Chicken scratchings. EMS. Yeah, EMS. Met Friday, August 14th, 9:00 AM. Old business, talk about the new 2015 ambulance, put new injectors in the old ambulance, and made repairs to the ambulance box, the one that hit the tree. For the month of July, $56,705.29 in revenue on 191 billable calls. That's the report.
Alright, thank you. Any questions?
No, thanks for asking.
John, you got a water board report?
Water board met at the water building last week, and they are considering, we've got some serious roof and guttering problems. The gutters were built on the inside of the building. I've never seen that before, but they said it was quite common in the 40s and 50s that this went on. And we have some tremendous leaks that is causing a lot of problems, and quite honestly, I'm surprised there hasn't been some serious issues. We have a company from Warsaw that is looking into repairs, and that is, I feel that is the major issue, but the other issue is also the leak is roofing, that is leaking pretty badly. And they're looking into doing it by sections, because it's doing it as a total, it's gonna be quite expensive. The guttering is probably the primary issue, and doing just one section of the roof at the time, there were four sections of roof that need to be done, and just gonna see on budgeting how we can get it done, how much we can get done before winter sets in this year is the main priority.
Thanks, John. Any questions? Okay. Good, short. Got a lot on the table here. Okay, we have unfinished business. We have three buildings here on unfinished business, so let's start with the Thousand Monroe. Jim Kessler?
James Kessler. I have made the agreement with Advanced Guttering to buy the property, and they've got a timeline for you, so if it's okay with you guys, so I can sell it to them, I will. But I'll let him speak.
My name is Paul Edgerton. Mr. Kessler contacted us, me and my wife, about a month ago, went over there and we looked at the property. It's something we can fix. I'm positive I can do that. The roof, again with, is in serious shape right now. It needs to be done right away, but I guess I'm here to ask the council to allow me to take this project over, and I wasn't sure about what happened all before this, your timelines and all that. And I wasn't sure about what happened all before this, your timelines and all that, but I know it's something we can do. The house has good bones as far as that goes. I didn't notice any insect damage or anything like that, so it does need totally gutted out on the inside and debulished on the outside. Things are just growing wild around it, but we're here to ask to see if we can take this on.
You guys have a closing date?
No, I had to go through this process first just to make sure that we were going to be allowed to do this.
What's your plan for the house then? To just rehab it and then flip it?
Yeah, we're going to totally rehab it. No, I don't flip anything. We just gonna totally redo it and then it's actually a duplex, so there's an efficiency on one side and then there's a bigger apartment on the east side of it.
How long do you think it'll be to be reformed, secured?
The roof part of it, if we're allowed to do this, I would say we'd probably try to get something scheduled in within the next month. It is the end of the summer and everybody's busy, you know, as far as that goes, but that has to be done as soon as possible. And then as far as the inside of it, we'll probably start gutting it right away, just and that's going to be a process of taking, that's going to take a couple of months just to get that part done right there. There's a lot of house there. But as far as being a finished project, I would try to get the whole inside of it, gut it out, get the roof all done on the outside, and if we have time, maybe even get the siding and windows and doors. But in this winter, when we are not able to be doing our thing, is when we be in there doing the drywall and electrical plumbing and all that. So it would be totally, totally new on the inside.
Don't satisfy me.
Do you want to revisit it, table it another month or so? You'll probably have anything to report on or?
Well, do you need this, what type of timetable do you need before you can get a contract and a, and a closing secured?
Well, we're going to take care of that part right away, actually, if we're able to do this, so that will be done as of the end of this week.
So you need, basically, you need an okay from us?
I want an okay or this won't happen.
Okay. Do we have to give him a blessing in order for the closing to take, to take part?
Is there someone here that would like to speak on that property? I've had some calls.
Oh, I have too.
Since I got an email and Mr. Shaw's here. I'd be, I'd be.
If he's willing to take it, Steve Shaw, if he's willing to take it, fix it, I know he'll do a good job on it, so.
What are the calls?
I suggest we give him.
Pardon me?
What's, what are the calls? What's, what's the problem?
Well, it's in, it's, it's already in the motion to condemn it, so we've got to kind of back off if somebody's gonna, has yourself going to take this and better the property.
I just didn't know if there were certain complaints that?
Oh, the call, what are the calls? Oh, okay, I misunderstood you how we went. We've had complaints on the nuisance to the neighborhood, you know, just the overall condition of the property.
It's definitely an eyesore, you know, but it's going to be better, or it could be.
Would you like to say something, Robert?
I, I collect raccoons and possums.
She collects a lot of them.
And cats, because we have neighbors that don't leave their cats at the side. But it is, it is bad.
Yeah, we know that, but what our point is, is if we, if we give him the blessing to proceed.
Right. And I, I think we probably need a motion for that, Andy, to have a motion to proceed.
Well, strictly speaking, he doesn't need your blessing to purchase the property.
No, no.
You don't hold, they don't hold that restriction or have a veto on your, to buy it. The way this process works is that at the last hearing, it came before then whether to pursue an unsafe building complaint, commonly, but sometimes inaccurately called a condemnation, and they tabled that to this meeting. And if they want, they may make an order to further table it, to come back in thirty or sixty days and review it. And that, that remains true even if it's changed hands, so strictly speaking, you'll need their permission to own it, but I understand your motivation. You're more motivated if they're going to hold off on the.
If it's going to stay on the list, I don't want to have to deal with it.
Yeah, so if you're going to give him more time on it than like the prior matter and order tableing it for a defined period of time would be appropriate.
So do we need to take a motion on that to table it?
If we table it, are you still interested in buying it?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because that would still, it would still be on the list, but you know, we, we would give you time to do the work and then if you're showing progress on it then.
Because we'd rather have you fix it.
Yeah, we'd rather see it fixed up and put back than the city carry the cost of it.
Well, we can do it.
Yeah.
And you guys do.
Or you can, or you can vote to dismiss it and not formally bring it back at all. But if you wanted to, if you dismiss it and you wanted to revisit it.
Then we have to start over.
In case he has to send it around the nurse.
I think we should table it personally to the council because you don't know what happens tomorrow, but if you show good faith and you move forward, we're not going to condemn it, you know, but if something happened and the deal doesn't go through, I think we should just have it there in case we have to come back and revisit it.
That's understandable.
I guess my thought would be to table it, give it thirty or sixty days. If the sale goes through, then we could look at dismissing it.
Agreed.
I think the big thing is clean, clean up that overgrowth that is against the building and outside, so that's, that's the thing that I've heard quite a bit. And then, and there's a lot of overgrowth in that, all the way around that property, up against.
Cyclops shovel.
And, yeah, on the outside, so help the neighborhood. That would be the big thing, I think, in the neighborhood.
I think they'll take care of that, I mean, it doesn't, you want to visit it again, visit it again in thirty days?
I think we need a motion to revisit it in thirty days.
I'll make a motion, revisit it in thirty days.
Okay.
I'll stick. Thank you. Properties, properties are always just taken care of and done well, so. Just good news.
Good luck, thanks. Okay, we have another house on seven hundred Fulton Avenue update.
James Kessler. My brother Kenneth and I jointly own that and Mr. Shaw is proposing to buy it. We want to sell it to him and we're both in agreement to sell it. I don't forget you.
He's hiding over there. He moved on there.
So whatever, we cleaned the place up a bunch. We still haven't fixed all the stuff, but it's, at any rate, Mr. Shaw has a buyer for it and wants to buy it. We agreed to sell.
Steve Shaw. What we'd like to do is pretty much what he's doing. We haven't decided yet. We need to get somebody inside and look around. I would encourage the council to come by anytime, anybody. I live right across the street, so just come by anytime and, you know, I'll walk you through it if you want, you know, so you can see what we are and are not doing. And I would ask that you just do the same thing, just revisit it in thirty to sixty days. It's going to take us about three weeks to get the title and everything done, so we won't be doing anything probably for at least three weeks.
Well, he lives right by it, so it's kind of in your or best interest to fix it.
Yeah, that's why I said, you know, we're not going to, we can't do anything until we get the title cleared and all that. We'll make sure that's all cleared and cleaned, which I'm sure is just a matter of paperwork.
Right. Okay. Anybody else that commented on?
Thirty days enough for you?
Well, it takes three weeks to get the title. And we can't do anything till we get that title. It'll be, it'll be at least three weeks to keep, make sure everything's clear and clean. That was what I was told.
So we should, we table this for sixty days?
Sixty days, John?
Make that motion.
Thank you.
One second.
All favor?
Who made the motion?
Brian.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was writing, I couldn't catch it.
Now we have one more, three twenty-three Fulton Avenue. Owner here?
John Kates. I purchased it last month on the other, and I kind of fix it and it looks pretty good right now. Just finished the roof today. We're going forward with this.
Good deal. I think it's, you're already working on this one. I heard that through the, I've already had compliments on it, so.
The roof's starting to start getting siding this week.
So at this point, Case, is Casey, yeah, here, back here. So he's got the permit and he's working on it, so it's basically going through your office now and you're doing inspections on it, everything?
They are, yeah. They have the permit and like you said, it looks great. I mean, they, they have siding on the home now they've started on and the roof they started this morning. I know the north side was completed when I went by this afternoon, or I mean, south side.
The north side, the north side.
Can we just dismiss this?
Yeah.
I want you to say.
It's terrifying.
All in favor, dismiss this since they're in the process of working, okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, we have permit fees. Well, no, we got a citizen committee, excuse me. Mark?
I'll, I'll wait till, there's a lot of the committee here. We'll wait down till the resolution.
Okay. All right, we have a permit fee to waive for the Rochester Girls Softball Pavilion. Is that what they're building out there to waive that? Casey or what?
No, they're building new dugouts for the soccer fields. And then they're also going to be building a media tower, which at the time I wrote that, for them to give to you, I did not know that. It's actually a storage building, I'm sorry, it's a ten by ten storage building. And they're going to have a staircase to the top of it, to the roof for media. And so Gary has spoke to the contractor and made sure they, they understood it had to be gated both at the bottom and the top with the requirement of a six-foot wall along that staircase at the top, just to make sure that no one was going to scale it, trying to get up on top. So Gary's talked to them about the safety concerns and having that open access to a roof, but that they're also wanting to do that.
Okay, so we need a motion to entertain, to waive the fee for the girls softball?
Rochester Soccer. Rochester Soccer. I put on the, yeah, I put on the, because that's what Casey and I talked about, but it is soccer, so I apologize.
Okay, so it's Rochester Girls Soccer?
Soccer.
Soccer, okay. So I have a motion to waive the fee. Burns, second. Marty, all in favor? Okay. Now we have a legal update on seven twelve Main Street.
I'm working with Casey to get some information that will hopefully result in an agreement among the parties, the signals that I've got said they're open to that, so we can get some assistance on some things. I don't want to go into too much detail, but it's kind of still a negotiation. But that I anticipate probably in a month that we may have, have an agreement worked out on how to proceed and get that back in shape. I also met with Derek, the water department, who kind of raised the interesting question of water accounts that are left on after someone passes and how to address that, and so I'll be attending the water department on the eighth to talk with them a little more about maybe strategies to kind of minimize that, so.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, do we have any ADA concerns today? Let's move to ordinance resolutions. We do have a resolution eleven twenty fifteen, which is OTC pharmacy sales. Is this where you want to bring this to the table now, Mark?
Yes, I believe Shaw had sent you an electronic form of the, of this handout, handbook that was, that I put in front of you today. I don't know if anybody from the committee, Harry, do you want to say anything about the resolution at all or the committee work in general?
Harry Webb, basically this, so this is actually the committee that's been formed in March, trying to address the issue of methamphetamine, and it's, we've come up with lots of different strategies, but the one that seems to be the most glaring is the oversale of pseudoephedrine. In this county, probably ninety percent of pseudoephedrine sales is going into methamphetamine. So this, this resolution is part of an overall program that we're doing, trying to get the area pharmacies to what we'll call legitimize the sale. Basically, know your customer, sell it to those who need it, but don't just sell it to anyone that asked for it. The handout you have is a, actually a handout we prepared for area counties to implement programs that we've done similar, that we've already started here. The area chains are all complying with our requests and so far we've seen about a fifty percent reduction in pseudoephedrine sales. Of course, that's causing them to go to outer counties, but it's still got another fifty percent to go, or I guess the number, I think it's probably legitimate. This resolution, you know, there's several options here. There could be, there's obviously state law would be a overall goal and that's something we're working towards. But this would be kind of just a reinforcement of what the committee has already asked the pharmacies to, to do what they're already kind of doing. It also could possibly become an ordinance. The ordinance may have some challenges and we didn't necessarily want to speak to the council in an ordinance forum until you guys had a chance to address it. The county council is also considering this and Brown is actually possibly drafting an ordinance. But what we're doing in Fulton County is going to be mirrored by counties all around this, and that's kind of why we really want to get this out there and so that we can share with other counties. Nobody that wants to have more meth labs, right? So I think it's a pretty easy statement, but we're, we're basically hoping to get something that would cause the surrounding counties to adopt similar ordinances. So by just approving something and saying that we are asking pharmacies to do this is a good first step. You guys have any questions for ones you've read about it?
Yes, I have one.
Sure.
Who regulates your sale of this type of thing? The state, the county, or the city?
There is a rule that's by the state that says a sale has to occur, anybody can sell pseudoephedrine, not just pharmacies currently, but majority of pseudoephedrine has been sold in pharmacies. There are a few, in, in Fulton County, it's all pharmacies, but they have to report it with a thing called N-Plex. N-Plex is the reporting mechanism. And so if you want to buy pseudoephedrine, you'd have to show your driver's license, it gets scanned and the product gets scanned and it checks it against this real-time database to determine if you've already bought through a limit. So that's the current process. You're allowed to buy, you know, if you take pseudoephedrine legitimately, you're, you're allowed to buy basically a daily dose on a monthly basis. But the, what this, and it was initially thought that that would control the problem, but it hasn't at all. It's basically generated this new thing called smirping where they basically get all their friends to buy their pseudoephedrine for them. We have meth cooks who just recently drove to South Bend and went to the homeless shelter and picked up carloads of homeless people who had driver's licenses and then drove them to a Walgreens store and one after another, bought their maximum amount of pseudoephedrine. And then they came back to Fulton County and cooked enough to make three pounds of meth. And it's all being done and they're just closing their eyes to it. Sounds unbelievable.
But an ordinance we would pass really doesn't have any teeth.
It would not have.
From what you're saying.
This does not have any teeth. This is basically asking. An ordinance could possibly have a fine attached to it. It could also possibly be challenged. If they wanted to stick their neck out and say, you know, why are you limiting us from selling pseudoephedrine? I'm not sure that's a fight that they really would want to do, but it could potentially put the city at risk of litigation.
The resolution does, would require those that exceed a projected amount to, to report to the Board of Works, however, to try to justify those sales. Again, no teeth, but pretty bad publicity. The paper is on board and supported, running monthly numbers on the, on the sale of pseudoephedrine products in the county.
Why can't the committee then put pressure on the state legislators to do something statewide rather than? statewide rather than try to piecemeal this thing?
Well, we are.
It's been in the state.
And it's, it's gone nowhere.
It's gone nowhere.
I know.
There's been, you know, the last three or four years, been an attempt to make a prescription.
Yeah.
And it's been fought by state medical, the doctors, it's been fought by consumer groups, and it's been fought by the drug manufacturers.
Right.
Very successfully fought. This legitimization bill has never been tried. It has passed in the state of Oklahoma, then a legitimization bill basically requiring the pharmacist to legitimize the sale, has been passed in the state of Arkansas. And that had similar results. There's only two states that have made a prescription. Arkansas has made it, pharmacists had to legitimize it.
Mississippi, didn't they?
Mississippi and Oregon. But Arkansas, by legitimizing it, has allowed, basically mirrored the results of Mississippi where it was a prescription, but yet the people who still needed to get pseudoephedrine couldn't get it. And that's really, I mean, the nuts and bolts of this is the pharmacies should know their customer. If you know your customer and you know that person is a customer that's using it legitimately, sell it to them, you know? But if you don't know who they are, they come in here with an out-of-town driver's license, they're a homeless person who's basically going to exchange it for heroin or booze or fifty bucks, don't sell it to them. Simple matter, that's just common sense. But it, you know, the sad thing is is that a lot of times corporate pressures have, have pressured these stores to maximize their sales instead of legitimizing it.
Is the hope to get enough cities and counties on board to create some momentum to put pressure at the state level?
Yes. What we're trying to do is if we can show the pharmacists really can legitimize sales, and if we can get our numbers down to one or two hundred boxes a month instead of seven hundred to a thousand boxes a month, if we can show we can do that without a law, then it would show, it would go a long way in trying to get a law that pharmacists can do this. If we can show we can do it, then it probably will pass. And it's a win-win for, you know, consumers aren't going to fight it, state medical's not going to fight it. And so it's, Randy Head has proposed to carry this bill. And we've got, Indiana Association of Cities and Towns came to our meeting and we met with their legal counsel and he's meeting with the law enforcement communities right now and seeing if they can get behind it. But obviously, legislation is, is the ultimate goal. And using the state board of pharmacy to yank a license from somebody selling too much is, is the penalty we need. But it's a year and a half away from being passed. And do we really need another hundred meth labs until we pass a law?
Well, the mayor's, Duke Bennett's been the leader for the state Indiana Association of Cities and Towns with attorneys, and they've taken it with committees to the state legislation for the last three years. And they, they've gotten closer to getting hearings, but it keeps getting kicked out. So you're exactly right. It's going to take another year and a half. I mean, legislation's over, so next year will be another one. And, you know, this is something that's, I think it's, at least it's a step in the right direction that we don't have any teeth in it, but at least we can get the drugstores to do it.
It's basically putting the stores on notice that we're watching. You know, we can't report individual store data, but we can see aggregate numbers. And we can, you know, the strategies in there basically talk about how a pharmacy can legitimize it. It's not a hard process. They all recognize them. These smarts aren't hard to identify. It's hard for police to identify them with the N-Plex data because they're just getting surrounded by numbers. You know, we're getting, you've got about three hundred smarts in this county among the banks and drug devices. And you can identify some of those people, but you can't identify all of them. They could be anybody.
Any questions?
Thanks, Brad.
Thanks, Harry.
Okay, I want to make sure. Did everybody have, Attorney Perkins had emailed out the revised resolution this morning or last night? So I just want to make sure that...
Is that what he has to read?
No. Oh, well, he may, Brian may have.
Get the revised.
This, this is adopted, the plan, excuse me, is adopted, then the plan is to put a copy of the signs, a resolution from this council. And we've already prepared a packet for the pharmacies, even though they're all kind of complying already, we've prepared a packet that basically shows all the statistics and then it'll include this resolution, basically asking them to continue their efforts.
Okay, thank you. Andy, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I do, no, I don't have anything to add. I have a guilty question.
So you're confident we can go ahead and just entertain a motion, read it, and pass this?
Yes, as a resolution, it's like I said, it's advisory, compelling. I am raised some concerns when Marty asked me about it in an ordinance form, for mainly because I think there's a moderate to significant risk that it could be successfully challenged on the theory that the state occupies the field when it comes to the regulation of pharmaceutical products. And I think someone could say, you know, the municipalities are not empowered to regulate that industry because the state has already chosen to do so or not chosen to do so in some respects. And either can be seen as occupying the field. And my real fear is to, I don't want to see the city at this point dragged into something like that and on top of it have the challenger say, judge make them pay our attorney's fees for having to overturn what was something they never should have passed. So a resolution, I don't believe carries any of those risks.
Right. Okay. I will entertain Brian to read the resolution 1-2015 in its entirety.
Eleven-2015.
Eleven?
Eleven.
I thought I said eleven. Did I not say eleven-2015?
Oh, literally, you said one-one.
No, I said one-one, eleven. I'll say. All in favor? Okay. Put your TV face on.
Resolution number eleven dash twenty fifteen, a resolution requesting that all pharmacies in Rochester change their over-the-counter sales policy. Whereas the purpose of this resolution by the city of Rochester is to request that Rochester's five retail pharmacies, Walmart, Kroger, CVS, Walgreens, and Webbs, and any future pharmacies, change their open policy regarding sale of pseudoephedrine containing nasal sinus decongestant to representatives of possible meth lab operators, and begin selling now available pseudoephedrine with meth deterrent properties instead. The intent of this requested policy change is to keep meth-producing retail products out of the hands of meth lab operators. By accepting this civic responsibility, these pharmacies will be joining Rochester, Fulton County, and state of Indiana law enforcement personnel in eliminating meth labs in Rochester and Fulton County, thereby reducing dangerous risks to the welfare, health, and safety of Rochester and Fulton County residents. Whereas the city has a growing concern over the continual development of meth labs in Rochester and Fulton County areas, meth lab operations are costing Rochester and other Fulton County taxpayers millions of dollars and causing extensive waste of resources. Also, due to the very addictive nature of methamphetamine, it is alarming to note that in the 2014 Indiana youth survey, five percent of the surveyed Fulton County twelfth graders reported using this drug at least once, an event which is probably far more likely to occur when meth is produced locally. Whereas Fulton County has recently been rated by Purdue University as the third worst county among forty-two rural Indiana counties in terms of meth lab seizure rate. Whereas it is reported by Indiana State Police that eighty-seven former meth lab houses exist in the Rochester area, all of which represent past or continuing need for decontamination. Whereas the Fulton County Sheriff's Department reports that eighty-six meth labs have been seized in Rochester and other Fulton County areas in the last two years, May 2013 to May 2015, that meth labs are a continuing problem. Whereas Rochester Police Department is continuing, is a continuing participant in meth lab elimination, an activity which represents a continual drain on the department manpower resources. Whereas a citizen action committee was formed in the Fulton, in Fulton County in March 2015, with the stated sole objective of assisting in the reduction of meth manufacturing in Fulton County, and whose concerned volunteer members are representative of a broad range of Rochester and Fulton County activity, finance, law enforcement, business, legal profession, pharmacy profession, community service, and community education. Whereas the Indiana State Police considers the meth lab problem in Fulton and Miami County so severe that in May of 2015, it established a two-county task force to attack the meth lab problem. Task force members are from the Indiana State Police, Indiana State Excise Police, Indiana Department of Correction and Parole Division, Fulton County Sheriff's Department, Miami County Sheriff's Department, Rochester Police Department, Peru Police Department, Fulton County Prosecutor's Office, Miami County Prosecutor's Office, Miami County Probation Office, and Fulton County Probation Office. Whereas the Fulton County Sheriff's Department, despite serious shortages of deputy personnel, is providing full-time deputy manpower to the two-county task force for at least six months in support of this effort. Whereas in considering the meth lab problem in Rochester and Fulton County, there is no criticism of law enforcement efforts. Law enforcement officers have been locating and arresting meth lab operators continually. However, the source of the meth lab problem, the materials used in the manufacture of meth continue to be sold to meth lab representatives by our local retail pharmacies in support of their policy to sell over-the-counter products to all customers. Whereas pseudoephedrine is the key ingredient in the manufacture of methamphetamine, and it is found in nasal sinus decongestants sold over the counter by our local retail pharmacies. Unrestricted sales of non-meth-resistant pseudoephedrine by Rochester local retail pharmacies are reported by the Indiana State Police to be approximately seven hundred boxes per month, an estimated six hundred boxes of which are used by meth labs or produce meth in Fulton County. Annualized, that is about seven thousand boxes of meth producing substance sold by our local pharmacies each year and used by meth labs to produce meth in Rochester and Fulton County. Whereas there are now meth deterrent nasal sinus decongestants, which do not work in the manufacture of meth and which are readily available for sale by our local pharmacies. These products provide the decongestant performance of pseudoephedrine, but significantly disrupt illicit meth making. Nexofed and Zefrex D are examples of meth deterrent nasal sinus decongestant products available. Now therefore be resolved that the city encourages and strongly suggests that all Rochester retail pharmacies change their over-the-counter sales policies by, A, selling only pseudoephedrine products with meth deterrent capabilities which are readily available, and B, selling all other pseudoephedrine containing products that do not have meth deterrents formulations, owing to those patients who in the professional judgment of the pharmacist are determined to have a legitimate medical and pharmaceutical need. Pharmacists are encouraged to review prior medication and filling history, perform patient screenings, and use other tools that provide professional reassurance to the pharmacist that illegitimate medical and pharmaceutical need exists. If the pharmacist is suspicious of the legitimacy, he or she should continue to restrict the use of non-meth-resistant products. It is requested that this retail sales policy change be adopted not later than August 31st, 2015. The cooperation of Rochester's local pharmacies with this request will be greatly appreciated. The effectiveness of this policy change will be measured by the number of boxes of pseudoephedrine sold each month by pharmacies in Rochester, as reported by the Indiana State Police. As the number of boxes of pseudoephedrine sold in Rochester declines, very significant reductions in meth labs in Rochester and Fulton County can be expected to result. Pharmacies that continue to sell unusually high amounts of pseudoephedrine products that are not meth deterrent will be requested to explain their reasons, therefore, to the Rochester Board of Public Works and Safety. Non-meth-resistant pseudoephedrine retail products must be kept out of the hands of meth lab operators in Rochester and Fulton County. Finally, be it resolved that nothing in this resolution is intended to circumvent current or future Indiana state law or United States law.
I don't think the camera was on. Can you read that again?
Sure, I've got time. Kids are the babysitter.
I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and pass resolution eleven-2015.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, passed.
I'd like to thank most of the, most of the members of the committee are here tonight. I don't know if everybody's here, but I'd like to thank you for coming and being at the meeting tonight.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else to say that's in the audience today? If not, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
Did we miss a property? I saw Mr. Wired here. He was on the last, the last time.
Three twenty-three, four.
Okay. For some reason, I thought that he was on Franklin.
Yeah.
Okay.
You staying all night, or you may make a motion?
I'll make a motion adjourned.
I'm here on behalf of six thirty seventeen on a fire ordinance.
What, what, what address?
It's for, um, fire pit ordinance. My name's Ed Rodriguez, or Benavides, it was Rodriguez. My last name is spelled B-N-A-V-I-D-E-Z. My residence is six thirty seventeen street. I was given a complaint summons by Officer Burton, which he threatened me to, he's going to go to the police station, if he had to go to the police station, get this, the ordinance that he was going to issue in the citation court. And he brought me an ordinance, but to me, I think this ordinance is not correct because what I've gotten from the city council in, in the past is for loud exhaust and everything. And I also went to Andy Schatz, which is the chief of police, and he said that it's legitimate. But if I can, can I bring it up to you?
Sure.
Is this on the agenda?
No, but you can look at it, take it into consideration.
Ordinance that Officer Burton brought me.
Okay.
And I asked for a complete ordinance cover sheet on it from the past. I got it from Mr. Officer, Chief Andy Schatz had asked me where did I get that ordinance from, and I told him from your police department.
Okay, so your question is today on burning outside?
Yes.
Fire pits? So were you burning a fire pit?
Yes, I was. I was burning a fire pit, and the officer asked me if I was cooking at the time, and no, we weren't. And we did cook after the fact, after he left and threatened to give me an ordinance ticket, so we did cook.
Did he give you a ticket?
Yes, he still did.
Oh, you still have a ticket?
Yes. I got to go to court on the third on that. But after fifteen years living here, I've had burned fires several times, never, I've had complaints from my neighbor next door. And attorney told him that if it's maintaining nuisance or whatever, getting smoke in his house, that he can hire an attorney to sue me for that or whatever. But, you know, it's just like a nit pick all the time between us and them. And, you know, every time it rains, their gully in the bottom, it fills up full of water, smells like sewage. I'm sure my, our chief, Andy Schatz, lives just one, probably about a block and a half from me or so, or a block away, and I'm sure he can smell it too. But, you know, I just want to get this resolved. And it's already been passed by you guys in, or not you, but back in eighty-six, I believe. It was passed, but it's not saying, you know...
So what kind of fire pit do you have?
It's around...
Is it an enclosed fire?
Yeah. It's one you can buy from Walmart or Loles or Home Depot.
And you burn trash in it?
No, I never burn trash. And also, my neighbor at sixteen thirty-one had burnt plastic.
Okay, well, I'm not too concerned about your neighbors right now. I'm concerned about your situation.
We received a complaint that the smoke was bothering the neighbor. Officer Burton went down there after we put it out. He said he wouldn't. He wanted to see the ordinance. He said there is an ordinance. He was mistaken at first initially because he, I don't know if you used to read it, it's okay to use it for food or not. But what the ordinance says, if it's a nuisance to your neighbors, then you have to put it out. Officer Burton went back, got Mr. Benavides a copy of the ordinance and brought it back as citation because he refused to put it out.
So at this point, we're not the judge here, so it has to go through.
I understand, but he should have gave me a citation right there and then, rather than threaten me to go to the police station to get that ordinance, you know? And I also went to Andy Schatz, talked to him, the chief, and he got all hostile in, almost in my face because I did tell him, you know, now if you look at all of you people, you know, how many biracial people are in here? You see?
I don't think we're really...
Biracial, but I brought the attention to him, you know, about biracial. And he turned around and got upset.
Well, Ed, you've already got the citation. You're going to have to deal with that with the judge. We can't do anything about it, but...
Yeah, I understand that. But, you know, I'm tired of it. You know, I shouldn't have to come to the city council and complain because the officers here are, you know, profiling me. And this is the second time I was up sixteen thirty-one.
Basically is what it's saying.
Well, it don't really bother anybody because it was trailing all over the place.
Obviously bothered your neighbor.
Yeah.
Who called, who called the police then?
Apparently the neighbor, yeah.
So it was bothering them?
Well, they said it was bothering them, but we, you know...
Yeah, that's, that's it, that's the right answer.
Well, just like loud exhaust. You know, everybody's got motorcycles. They go rum, 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 you know? It's just like an ordinance. There's ordinances all over the place, you know? But no, the government does not follow. The government does not follow. The government does not follow.
When they answer their complaint, this is what the law.
But the majority of the people that work for the government don't break the rules all the time, all the time. I see it. You know, I observe all the time the officers passing by have their windows rolled up, and they totally ignore the loud exhaust. And I have the ordinance right here, which is loud exhaust, and that's been passed back in 97. And they're catching up on this fire on 1998.
Well, we.
It's got some fire, but.
Yes.
Okay. Not motorcycles, not earthquakes.
But I just wanted to pay your attention.
We, we hear you, and it's, you don't redo an ordinance unless it's, needs to be changed. So we still enforce our ordinances back in the 80s or whatever, if they didn't have to change.
Yes, but why is this, this don't seem like it's legit, because, you know.
Sometimes they get amended and downsized, you know? That's probably going back to that ordinance. I don't know, but we can't do anything about it. We heard it, so it's going to be, talk to the judge, and they'll talk.
The city's asking for, for them to get sued, because that, this ordinance is not, it's not saying anything about your cooking, nothing, and they're.
But you had a complaint, that's the issue. A neighbor complained.
They were complaining.
Hopefully your neighbors can work it out with you.
Yes, and they've had fires too, which come over onto my side, so.
And if you don't like the call and the claim, it'd be the same way.
And Mr. Burton must know the young girl that had called, because she was outside taking photos of me.
I can't answer that.
But I'm just saying, you know, okay, thank you.
All right.
Motion adjourned.
Okay, second?
Second.
A conversation? All in favor to adjourn? Okay. Spin to her.